And I think several of you have mentioned to me, we hope we don't talk here too long because there's another bad roll of storms coming in. So I don't know if we'll talk through that or not, but I think we're going to try to get things done as quickly as we can here in all respects if possible. Okay, I would ask, I'm going to do the invocation and then we'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd all please rise for a moment. Tonight, as a community of Batavia, we are ever mindful and thankful and appreciative for the outstanding set of public service staff that we have in our community, as was proven so visibly this past weekend on several occasions. And let the record reflect that they responded in the highest degrees of professionalism, took very strong concerns about the issues before them. And at the end of the day, despite some bad situations that we were not directly involved with, things were handled in a very professional way. And we are very proud of those staffs that did this this past weekend. So we just ask for a special appreciation and blessing on all those who were impacted this past weekend, knowing that in our hearts and minds, all of us here tonight feel the dilemma, but the pride in what we were able to do and show as we went about our various assignments in the public safety and in the community development and in the overall mood of the community. So I just wanted to say thank you again to everybody who was involved. If you would join in me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and would one of you volunteer to read us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, to please call the roll.
Beraza. Lancy.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Malley.
Here.
Malone.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Peeper.
Here.
Farrenbach.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Vogelsinger.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
For the record, we have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Moving then to item number four, reminder, if you're going to speak to the city council tonight, we ask that you please come up and use the podium and then use the mic as it is being recorded and it's got to be recorded on the TV screen to be heard in the meeting. So I appreciate the good efforts of anybody that wants to do this. Okay, moving to item number five, items to be removed, added or changed on tonight's agenda. Does anybody have anything?
Your Honor, we need to add an executive session for properties.
That would be after, it's on there, item 13?
Executive session.
It lists as item 13 on the agenda.
Is it 13?
Executive session, purchase of properties.
Okay.
It's already there.
You're now.
All right. Anybody else have anything they want to bring up at this moment? Okay, moving then to the consent agenda. Alderman, Beck.
Alderman, Baron now.
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Payroll totals for Act 4, August 15th, 2025, in the amount of $1,117, 232.10. The accounts payable total for August 18th, council meeting is $3,842,419.42. Approve the count minutes for July 21st, 2025, special meeting in July 29th, 2025. Ordinance 2025-043, amending the 2025 Wage and Salary Ordinance. Ordinance 2025-039, changing the name of Lockwood Court to Jefferson Court. Ordinance 2025-042, amending the text of the zoning code for sign regulations relating to wall signs above the first floor in the LI and GI districts, Aldi Inc., applicant. And Resolution 2025-101-R, variation to the subdivision regulations, city code title 11 for 947, Britta Lane, Nathan Jenke, applicant. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion second for the approval of the consent agenda as read. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Baron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Loman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Farrenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Vogelsinger.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item seven, matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Does we have anybody who wants to speak to us tonight? Could you give us your name, please? We know, but for the record.
I'm still Bob McQuillan from Batavia. Used to be from Geneva, so maybe some people aren't happy I moved to Batavia. I don't know. Bob McQuillan from Batavia, and good evening. First, I owe alterperson Sulfah a public apology. I rewatched last week's meeting, and I did mishear you, so I apologize. At the committee of the whole meeting last Tuesday, there were two decisions made that I don't agree with. I'm going to share two stories and some final comments, and I'll make it a three if possible. Last April, a group came to me and asked if I would request that the city fly the Sacred Heart of Jesus flag during the month of June. They were turned down in 2023, and no one else was comfortable speaking at a public meeting. I agreed, and we all know how that went. While I supported the flag flying, it wasn't my idea, and that may surprise some of you. The second story directly relates to last week's vote. I decided to conduct an informal poll at the Batavia Farmers Market on Saturday morning. As usual, the market was very crowded, so I looked for a cross-section of age groups that were resting on benches. I was able to speak to at least 22 people from 15 years old to 76 years old. After a brief introduction of what flags fly every day, that the unity flag has flown for the last three years, and a new policy required the city members to vote on any other flag requests, I told them that the council received a request to fly the suicide prevention and breast cancer awareness flags, and those were the first two non-unity flags ever requested since the flag policy went into effect last October, I believe. I said that exact same thing to everyone. My question was, how do you think the 12 members voted on the two Not one person said the suicide prevention or the cancer flag should not be flown, especially if the unity flag is flown every year. Some quick points. One guy said that he thinks all flags should be approved, but because I was asking, the vote was probably no. His wife agreed that all were appropriate. The 76-year-old, who was born in Batavia and lives in his childhood home, thought only government flags should fly. He said that flying the unity flag and not the other two reflects the times that we live in. Several others also believed that only government flags should be allowed. I spoke to a mother and daughter who were vendors. Without me knowing, the daughter is gay. They supported all three flags. One guy in his mid-20s said he opposed the unity flag, but it shows the political correctness the country operates under. The 16-year-old girl surprised me by agreeing the two flags should fly, but opposed the unity flag. None were aware of the results before I asked the question, and every person was shocked to hear the three-to-nine vote against both flags. I didn't ask if they were Batavia residents, but I don't think that really matters. City council members shared reasons for their vote and several cited the slippery slope concept. In my opinion, you are dealing with an anthill that is now the slippiest slope you can imagine. I'll address the 800-pound elephant in the room. You have now created a precedent where two very worthy causes were denied. In May, how can the council justify approving the unity flag? No matter how hard you try to convince Batavia residents that the unity flag represents everybody, everywhere, it does not. Whatever the council decides on the unity flag will create a real problem with many residents. Finally, in my opinion, you have two options. Only fly the four government flags, or change the vote on the suicide prevention and cancer flags. Changing your vote will make your decision in May, while still controversial for some, much easier and will not lead to a divided Batavia. I seriously hope you consider revoting on both flags. Thank you for your time.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I guess I'll comment. Obviously, I bought the suicide prevention services flag forward. You know, to be fair, I really did not see any opposition. It didn't even occur to me to be opposition to it before it came up here. True and true no-brainer. I did have to go back and say, sorry, we didn't vote for your flag. It's not going to fly. They're still going to be here, you know? So my ask is, when they do come up here and they do present, let's not make them feel unwelcome, you know, because it is part of the impression that we gave. Let's not make them feel weird or outside. So hopefully we'll go ahead and do that. One thing that did come clear to me, I don't think any of us anticipated we were put in a situation where we're being asked to compare charitable causes, political movements, or whatever, that are all good between each other, right? I know I didn't when I first heard about this a year ago. I'm sure people who were here for the original decision didn't imagine a situation like this coming up. So my ask is, you know, is there a third way? I mean, can this just be settled with a mayoral decree? Can staff just handle it? Do we have to bring it in front of city council every single time? Because I think we're going to make ourselves look uniquely bad, to be quite frankly. We've got to choose between stuff and prioritize stuff like this. Secondly, things get recorded, and things get pumped into large language models now, whatever, right? So when we say something out of turn here in relation to a topic like this, it may pop up in relation to our name five years from now, right? And that's not something that we want, right? If you want to go to citizenportal.ai, you will see all our meetings are up there. They're all categorized and listed, and they're being tracked, right? And they're being fed into AI models and everything. So the discussion here doesn't live and die here. And so my point would be, if we're going to put ourselves in a situation where we're going to rank charities and social movements and causes against each other on a regular basis, because this will not be the last flag request, is this a business we really want to be in? Or can we handle this through mayoral decree or just have staff do it for us, right? It's a real issue. It's 2025. It's a modern world. Nothing lives and dies in silence now. So it's just something to keep in mind.
Well, this is not an item that's published on our agenda tonight. And I know there's a number of people who have some interest in it, would like to speak. So I'm going to suggest, if you really want to further this, that we take it to the coming committee meeting, which will be on the agenda, and that way anybody in town that wants to come can come down and say it. But to pull a surprise vote tonight, I don't know where that one would go. So if you want to ask for a special part of the committee and a future date, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, yeah. At a future date, I don't think we need to drown on this. Like, I think let's give ourselves a break, right? But in a future date, we should probably revisit this.
Are there two other aldermen who joined that request for it to be put on a future agenda?
Yeah, I'll join that.
I will as well.
I would like clarification on exactly what is being put on the agenda. I mean, are we discussing the flag policy? Because there's a policy in place that's been voted on. So.
Yes, we're discussing. Now that we've seen what the.
You want to amend the flag policy?
I'm sorry, what?
You want to amend the flag policy?
I think now that we've seen the flag policy in action, the question is, is this something we still want to continue with? Or do we need to amend the policy?
I oppose going over this whole thing again. We've spent hours and hours and hours on the flag policy.
What's the desire, I guess, of the council to take it to the committee, and we'll see where it goes from there.
We'll try to get information out before the meeting, and then I'll try to keep the discussion short.
Very well.
Your Honor, I just want to add that it wasn't, the vote last week wasn't against suicide prevention. It was just, there were many of us that made comments of the flag that was presented to us. And I think that maybe if there was more of a universal flag that had a wider spread as opposed to a specific organization, then there's a strong possibility that that may have been. I don't want to speak for others, but I know for myself that that is what I would have preferred seeing. I think that we do run into a challenge when we start advertising nonprofits. And that's what that flag, to me, spoke to, was to that individual nonprofit. I will be here happy to support suicide prevention that is here in Batavia when we do the proclamation. But for me, it was just not the flag that I felt comfortable rising. And again, I will support them by putting out a lumineer, because that is something that they do to honor those people.
I think it's a council consensus. We are going to put this on a committee meeting and.
I would just object to the word consensus. I think we have the necessary three.
I think there's three people.
I think there's three people who is the necessary number to put it onto the, you know, just for the clerks.
I'm just saying, I want to make sure we're doing it the right way. Somebody, you just slipped it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I mean, because I've already said I oppose discussing this whole topic, so I'm not in consensus at all.
I guess we're all on AI now.
We're on satellite. We're on AI. It's what the world is.
Coming up on everybody's phone as soon as we're done with the meeting.
So my read here is, we are going to put it on a committee agenda.
Yes.
All right. We'll leave it at that for the moment, and it'll be publicized ahead of time. So anybody out there that wasn't here tonight that has a strong sense of feeling about it, we can certainly be welcome to come to the committee meeting. All right, do we have any other public, any other issues in the public? Okay. Next, we're very honored to have our police chief here to introduce a new probationary police officer, Megan Gregory, and we're going to swear her in. Chief, you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Absolutely. So I'm honored to introduce Megan to the city council for her oath of office today. She was recently selected by the Board of Fire and Police Commission to fill a vacancy in our department. Megan is a recent graduate of Western Michigan University. She graduated summa cum laude with a bachelor's degree in psychology and criminal justice. In addition to attaining her bachelor's degree, she is a decorated competitive figure skater while in school. If you happen to see me and Megan on the depot pond, it's just because I need a lesson in figure skating, because the last time I was on figure skates, I broke my wrist. So she also completed a three-month-long internship with the Kane County Sheriff's Office, where she routinely displayed her passion and interest in a career in law enforcement. She is scheduled to begin training at the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy on Monday, September 1st.
All right. Well, on behalf of the community, number one, let me say we're very honored and pleased that you like to come to work at Batavia, and we look forward to a very long and productive career with you at the Batavia Police Department. So that being said, I will ask you to repeat the following oath of office. I instate your name.
Megan Gregory.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of probationary police officer.
To the position of probationary police officer.
On August 18th, 2025.
On August 18th, 2025.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Duesalem, we swear or affirm.
Duesalem, we swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Say that again, sorry.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
A probationary police officer.
A probationary police officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Chief's going to take you in here with time. All right, we will move then to item number nine on our agenda, which is presentation and update on the wastewater treatment plant rehabilitation project. And Jerry Ruth of Trotter and Associates is again with us to give us an update. Jerry?
Good evening, everybody. This is your update for August for our project on the wastewater plant. So just on the surface, it doesn't look like we're doing a whole lot, but the electrical contractor and HVAC contractor are going like gangbusters out there. Headworks and the primary clarifiers and the clarifier control building closer and closer every day. We've made the final inflight pipe connection to the Headworks building, so that is now ready to activate with the opening of a gate. Primary clarifiers, they're operational enough to be used for that temporary bypass to make that piping connection. You'll see some pictures on that later. On site, there's been prep for pavement and sidewalk placement and just general prep for restoration on the site. In the sledge handling building, I mentioned the PCCB for the work that's going on there. In the sledge handling building, there's some electrical and HVAC going as well. And then they're starting in on punchless work. We're months away from final completion, but we'd like to give the contractors as much of a lead time as possible, especially when we're about to introduce wastewater into these buildings, so they have time to react to it. So nothing's a surprise the day before saying, ah, not so fast. So they've been working on that for about a week now. Some quick photos, and I'll be even quicker, is here's some shots of the asphalt pavement removal in preparation for new pavement inside the site. Some more up and down the site right next to the main building. This is a view of all that pavement removal, the general area that we're preparing for asphalt. The bypass, we shut down the bike path for a few days, sorry, but this should be the last time we have to do that. So we set up the pumps up there right next to the bike path. The stairs that you see in this photo are right alongside the bike path. And we set up the piping to go into the new headworks. We bypassed all the flow to make that final sewer connection, a very critical piece. We stopped the sewer short of the building, constructed the building, and this was the connection. So that time was pretty important. The contractor did a great job. These are the workers in the pit connecting those pipes from where we ended to the new building, the new headworks. They're putting lights. So some of the stuff, it's not all that fancy, but you will notice these things. So the lights on the outside of the building are in and operational, pulling wire for the HVAC, the fire alarm system, and finalizing the sprinkler piping with new coats of paint. Headworks, the grid equipment had a soft startup. We were terminating some utilities on site that were abandoning for some of the structures that were basically winterizing until the next phase, where we take them out and physically demolish them, such as the gas line on the right side. Here's an aerial from July, and the main thing between this aerial and this aerial is the sidewalk that you see around the site, making it a lot easier to access everything in the site. Here's an aerial on the north side. This is basically above Flynn Street, looking southwest at the new headworks. Again, the main difference is really the sidewalk in the upper left-hand corner. There's not a ton changed outside the structures. Clarifier, we used a couple of these clarifiers, as I mentioned, for bypassing flow around the headworks. So they came in very handy for that. And while we were doing that, it essentially allowed us a live demonstration of these structures in action, and they all operated flawlessly. Inside one of the diversion structures, we added the coating system that's going to protect the concrete in there from H2S eating away at the concrete. So this should make this diversion structure a 50-year structure, and more electrical wiring and terminations in the clarifier control building as well. Just some quick pictures of the sidewalk, left and right, form work and then placement of concrete and stripping of forms happened throughout the site. The contractors like to come in there and do as much as they can as possible in one swoop. So here's an aerial in July. And again, the main difference between this aerial and this aerial is the sidewalk. Inside the sledge handling building, again, nothing flashy, just wiring up everything so that we can have a safe, functioning site down at the south end of the wastewater treatment facility. And that's it for photos. A quick cost update in terms of progress, just over $42 million spent with engineering and construction. Schedule progress is at 69%. Cost progress is at 95%. So we're getting very close. There's not a whole lot of pieces to go in terms of cost, but they're very critical pieces in terms of controls and making sure that everything is safe and functioning and monitored. No change orders this month. I don't anticipate a change order coming through next month. I think the next one you'll see is probably going to be in October. In terms of schedule, for the master schedule update in August, the new headworks, this is like what we call it, what they're saying is worst-case scenario. So they moved up their backend, their late finish for headworks and primary clarifier control building to December. And you look at what I think they're going to be, they actually pushed the early finish back as they're seeing all of these punchless items that they know that they have to do, and it's going to take a little bit more time. So instead of five months ahead of schedule, it's now four months ahead of schedule. So still good, but I wanted to update you on that. And that's all for this evening. If there are any questions, feel free. Yes?
Did you see the bike path is closed, or the river trail is closed down right now?
It should not be closed right now.
Okay.
No.
Never mind.
You know, this is, I don't know how many in the council realize this, but this is being watched by a number of other cities. And this appears in the minds of a lot of people to be kind of the modern new water treatment plant that's been built. And so I've already had, I'm not going to say who, but I've already had several cities ask me if, when this is done, can they bring over their city council and walk through this thing and fully understand it? Because I guess we're going to have stuff here that a lot of other places don't have yet. And so there's a lot of interest in this, and we're kind of at the front end of the deal here. So I'm proud to be part of this, because it's, I think, going to do some significant enhancements to the environment and the long haul as far as water treatment and discharge of that water and everything else. So appreciate the good efforts.
Still really excited that we're below 2/10 of 1%.
That's also up there.
It's just amazing to me. I mean, I've been through a couple of these additions and the work down at the wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plant. And I don't think we've ever had that size of a project come through with that little of change orders. So that's a great. So that's a great thing.
All good stuff. So I'm glad to see you come. You never give us any bad news. You always are focusing right on where things should be heading.
Thanks, yes. Appreciate it, Laura. Nothing?
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, now we're honored to have the executive director of Batavia Main Street here to tell us a little bit about all the good things she and her organization are doing for Batavia.
Hi. All right. So first of all, I wanted to thank the city and the police department, all the city staff that helped us to make Cocktails in the Park a great event, another night. It was just beautiful. So thank you for everybody that came and helped us with that event. We estimate we'd had about 550 people, which 500 to 600 is our max, so we were really happy with the attendance. I don't think the weather has helped us this year with all of its uncertainty, but anyways, it was really fun. So thank you. Next, we have Block Party coming up at the end of the month. We will have lots of great things, live music. We have two new acts this year, so that'll be different, as well as 13 different vendors at the tasting area. They'll have $5 or less items that you can enjoy. And then next, that is August 31st, and 21 and older, it is a $5 admission, and we have slightly adjusted the time this year from 4:00 to 9:00 to 3:00 to 8:00, just so we're avoiding that little dark period. So note that. We had our third quarter merchant meeting this last month, and that was really great. We have a new person on our hype team, and she does a lot with small business SEOs, and she was kind enough to come to the meeting and talk about how to get found online, and just different tips that the merchants can do, simple, easy things, making sure their socials are linked to their Google profile, making sure their Google profile is active, making sure when they're uploading pictures to their website that they're named, because if you leave the numbers on your picture, it won't be found. But if you name Top in Batavia or something like that, you'll come up on search engines. And so we're learning lots of interesting things. The merchants really liked that. We're continuing to work on our regional marketing. We were on the WG and Weekend Break. That was a four hours where they did three different farmer segments, and then they repackage that for the five and nine shows. So another spotlight on Batavia. And then we have another, oh, before I go to that, I wanted to mention, we had Gustavo Suarez, the Main Street America Director of Entrepreneur and Small Business Support, visit us on August 2nd with the Illinois Main Street Director. He has been kind of talking about the boardwalk shops in theory when he does his work around the country, and I invited him out to take a look, and he was so impressed with Batavia's entrepreneurial ecosystem. I hope that you guys understand how Batavia is doing something really special right now with the artisan collective, the farmer's market, the boardwalk shops. We have collaborative businesses that are working together, as well as the Water Street Studios. He was just blown away at what we're doing to support startup businesses, and he was saying it's pretty much a model of what other communities would like to have. So I think it's something we should really be proud of. And then another boardwalk shop has announced that they have a brick and mortar. She is going to Geneva right by the Starbucks, so we're excited for her. That's Scout &amp; Gem. And then, I'm sure you all heard, but Warehouse 55 from Aurora is taking the old hearth and hammer space, as well as, there is a space in between that and part of the dock. So their total square footage in Batavia will be about 7,900 square feet. So it's really nice to have a nice, big retail coming to our area. They have almost 40,000 followers on Instagram, so, you know, they're already tagging us. We've reached out, so we're excited to see them. So that's all I have for you today. Any questions?
I just want to share that I went to Warehouse 55 yesterday, I guess it was, and they quickly figured out who I was.
Yeah.
And I didn't tell them initially, but somebody there knew who I was. And they were very, very anxious to get going, and they had some really nice things to say about you and Batavia Main Street and Chamber of Commerce and the reception they've gotten here. And I think they're of the opinion they're going to become bigger than what they are in Aurora with the space that you've got here and the opportunities for all these other things that will kind of work with them together, the River Street boardwalk and the boardwalk shops and all this other stuff. They're thinking this is the place to be. So thank you for doing all that, because I think this is one that you really wheeled into town.
Well, I hope so. I hope anytime Main Street can be a bonus for people.
All right.
Yeah, you guys are doing awesome work. Everything is, you know, Warehouse 55 coming is fantastic. I just do want to comment, I know I already kind of made a face when we saw Scout &amp; Gem was going to Geneva. It just seems like that it's something that maybe we should just keep in mind and keep thinking about. I know that it is kind of a private property ownership issue, but when we have, you know, we're doing all this work to recruit these businesses and build them up through the boardwalk shops, and they're not finding the small move-in-ready retail spaces that they need to take the next step. We're kind of doing all the buildup and then not getting the payout for all that work. And it's almost like we're not completing the cycle of what this is supposed to be. So just something for us to keep in mind as we move forward with this, because we really want to keep these shops in Batavia. That was the whole kind of reason for doing this in the first place, so.
Right. In the case of Scout &amp; Gem, she actually was looking at a space in Batavia, and unfortunately, it wasn't move-in-ready. And, you know, given what it would cost to build out that shop or just to go straight into something that's move-in-ready, I mean, it's something that we're talking to the landlords about, and we're talking to the city and trying to figure out solutions. But yeah, we realize that is an issue.
Lancy, you had something you wanted to ask?
Yeah, I mean, in the same vein, I would just say, you know, continue to keep us posted if there's things that we can be doing as a city or as a council to be helping you guys. Obviously, you know, there was a monetary kick-up, but, you know, whatever it might be, if it's more money or whatever, obviously you guys have made good use of it, and everything has been phenomenal coming out of your organization and the collaboration you've had with the others. So anything we can do to foster that and, you know, keep up the great work, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it, Beth.
Yeah, I sympathize with what Robin is saying. I feel like it's a huge loss for Batavia to not have Scout &amp; Gem here. This is their second year at the boardwalk shops. They've been very successful. I'm actually wearing some of her jewelry now, unintentionally, and that's a big loss for us. And I do think we just need to figure out, continue how to get creative with making our spaces available to small businesses in our downtown, how to work with our landowners and landlords as a city, and just collaborate, because we don't want to be losing these businesses to our neighboring towns, so.
We are working regularly with Anthony and Jeff just to come up with solutions. Everybody's aware of the problem, but we'll find solutions. It's just going to take a little bit of time and a little bit of effort, but we're definitely working with staff and the landlords to get the best we can in Batavia.
Keep us in the loop on how we can continue to be helping.
Say this again?
Keep us in the loop on how we can continue to be helping.
Okay, yes, I will.
I was going to ask, has there been any thought about, with talking with landlords about partitioning existing spaces? And are there any potential roadblocks that they're facing if they're considering that?
Did you say partitioning spaces?
Yeah.
There's been limited talk on that. All the talk has been with Main Street absorbing that cost, and at this time, you know, a build-out like that, we just can't afford.
We have had several successes with that. With the mercantile shops would be a great example.
Yeah, that's a great example.
Collaboration amongst those businesses and a willingness on the part of the property owner to accept independently since from each one of the entities.
Something for us to think about as we go down the road, but the one thing that I keep hearing about is, you know, maybe we need to do some sort of grant program for build-outs. So as we sit here and talk about things, you know, staff can sit there and talk about that too, you know, looking for other ideas. You know, maybe that's what we need to do, since that's what the big challenge is, is the build-outs.
If you look at Berwyn, they currently, they have a business alliance, and they have a grant program that coincides with their shops. They have certain parameters, or like a report card that their shops have to go through, and if they check off all of those and they are moving into a brick and mortar in the Berwyn downtown, they are given a grant for that as long as they comply. Like you have to arrive, you have to do all the things within that. And I think that that's a great option for us to help these businesses stay.
I will say, on the Berwyn shops, uniquely inspired by Batavia, my aunts came out here and said, what's these board shops? And they live in Berwyn. So they bought the store down in Berwyn, then they had a shop in their, then they got a shop in Berwyn, and they did candles. And so, and then I got all the surplus inventory, so I have 300 candles to give away, scented. If you guys want one, just let me know.
Anybody else? Well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go to item number 11, the regular agenda, which is item 11.1, Resolution 2025-097-R, awarding bid for demolition at 106 North River Street, the old tin shop building and awarding contractor Fowler Enterprises LLC. Who's got this one? Morgan Beck?
So this is a contract award to Fowler to take down the tin shop, which we've discussed many times now, is in disrepair, and beyond current finances to find any rehab fix for it. We also marketed it for sale if somebody wanted to move it or if somebody wanted to demo it to save any piece of it. And unfortunately, no interest was garnered from that request. So Fowler will be taking it down. They will be saving the ghost sign that is on the north side of the building. It also says that some consideration for reclamation of some wood. Is that Fowler themselves saving it for their own purposes or for collection? Or what does that mean?
That was something that the Historic Preservation Commission was interested in. I think we would be discussing with them whether, you know, whether we could allow, you know, people to reclaim that. It wasn't really part of the bid, but that's something we're going to be talking to them about, is the possibility of reclaiming some of the wood to be reused.
And is Fowler actually saving the sign, or are we doing that ahead of Fowler getting there?
They will be responsible for removing it and turning it over to us as part of the bid.
Right. Does anybody have any questions on this? Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I just tend to get a little nervous when I see a bid that's half the next highest and five times different from the highest on them. I remember we had our "Welcome to Batavia" sign problem, where we got kind of lowballed, and it turned out that wasn't accurate. We're pretty confident, sounds like we've worked with them before. Are we pretty confident?
Yeah, we have worked with this contractor before. We worked with this contractor, I want to say, four or five years ago with a demolition over on Park Street of a seriously dilapidated property, and they performed very well for us. So yeah, we have worked with them before. We are, they're confident with their number.
All right. Last question then I'll have here is with the reclamation of the wood. I like the concept there, and I do know that woodworkers are particularly interested in very old wood. We have a Batavia hardwood store, sure they have a network. If there is a way that we can make it available to Batavia residents, probably wouldn't take the whole thing, right? Maybe a handful of boards, but I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity to keep some of that lumber local, especially this old, you know, old hardwood is very valuable.
Yeah, I think we will talk to them and try and make that possible wherever it can be. You know, the building has been leaking for a while, so there's definitely some damage wood that may not be able to be reused, but yes, we will definitely work with them on that.
Any other questions?
Questions? Make a motion?
Anyone want to make a motion? I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion, second, for the approval of 11-1, Resolution 2025-097, awarding a bid for demolition at 106 North River Street. Any further discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Vocal singer.
Aye.
Barazza.
Aye.
Lancy.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Malley.
Aye.
Malone.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Sulfah.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Lowman.
Aye.
Peeper.
Aye.
Farrenbach.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
All in favor, Your Honor. 14 yes, no, no, none absent.
Motion's approved. Okay, moving to item 11-2, Approval City of Batavia Municipal Electric Utility Energy Who's the spokesman here on this one? Max?
Yeah, just as a brief summary, there's two drafts in here. Draft A is designed to kind of be very similar to what you had seen during the last discussion, and draft B was designed to incorporate some of the feedback and input, both from you all and stakeholders. You obviously feel free to continue to amend, discuss. You know, if you feel you need more discussion, absolutely feel free to. But the goal was to kind of take all the feedback that we received and try to put it into a draft that answers as many questions as possible. So staff are available to answer any questions, and yeah.
As I'll start, I'd say I went back through and read what we had originally and then what you sent out again, and, you know, both forms that were there. And I'm really not upset with any of it at this point. I think it states what we all talked about, what we feel like we want to have as our first run at an energy policy going forward. And I think the thing I'd like to say is, I think this is something that we use as a guide, we modify it when necessary, and we agree to do that on a regular basis, so that we do stay with some adaptability moving forward. I think it's really important. I think mainly it's going to depend on what regulatory changes we see and what technology occurs in the future, and you have to be ready to deal with either one of those. So I think that that's very important, and I just want to say that future councils are going to have to make decisions on that, and they're going to have to stay with, we have to on a regular basis go back and talk about it and look at what, you know, we're told to do, what's suggested to us, and what we think is out there that is good technology to move forward with, to be able to be diverse and still be able to be extremely reliable and, you know, as local as we can get it. Because I think everybody has seen the past couple of months with some of the storms we've had, how many people are out of power and how many times, you know, whether it's ComEd's website or whatever gets overloaded to the point where it crashes, that they can't show where the power's out, or you can't get to it because it doesn't have power. You know, the realities of that is, I think we still had power outages in the past, but nobody ever talked about it 30 seconds after it happened. And now it's immediately on social media, oh, this block is out, that block is out. I mean, we know more about our power grid, I think, from Facebook than we do from our own internal sources. And, you know, that's something that I think, you know, we just need to make sure that we stay adaptable to whatever happens in the future and be ready to make those changes.
Morgan Beck?
Thank you for sending the two versions. I will say that I like option B better. I like the bulleted format. I also like the addition of the glossary. I think there's probably some more terms we could throw in there, and one of them that I was thinking of was the point about illustrating throughout who's responsible for doing the things, and it says the utility will. And I know it seems so simple, but as a public-facing document to include, you know, the utility is the Batavia municipal electric utility, and spell that out in the glossary and any other place where it's, you know, grid modernization is that our internal Batavia grid is that promoting, you know, modernization out in the PGM land, stuff like that. So just a few more details like that baked in. I also, I brought it up the very first discussion and then forgot to last time, so I apologize. But to Susan's point in her email about the short-term interventions, the things that we could do right now, like the demand side or the other programs, the green program being mentioned in there, and just explicitly saying that these are things that we're hoping to do in the meantime, if that's important for we're hoping to do in the meantime, if that's important for Brattle to know. I think it's important for the public to know that that's a piece of it, that we're not just waiting for 20 years out in the line, that here's the things we're doing today as well. And make that our policy and say that explicitly. And then finally, the point about tying it back to the Greenest Region Compact and the Climate Action Plan, I do think is a good one, especially for Brattle's external knowledge. They might not be familiar with those plans. They might not be familiar that the Batavia, that Batavia signed on to those and made that a priority, but I think that would be a good thing to make explicit in there as well.
We can make all those things clear.
Anybody else?
Are we going to vote on one or the other? A or B or?
That would be just last.
What they have right now. Alderman Lehman would like to say something.
I would rather wait to vote until we have the updated policy, you know, with some of that new language added to it. I mean, if we agree to that, I, I agree with what Alderman Beck is, or Aldo Person Beck is mentioning with those, adding that language to it.
Make it in form of amendment and just add it to it tonight and what we approve.
I'd like to see it in writing though.
Vocal singer?
Alderman Malone had his hand up first.
Thank you. I, I like, if we're voting on it tonight, I'm leaning towards B. I think it kind of captures what we're looking for. I also echo, and I do like the, the amendments that we've, we've discussed here. And I also just wanted to thank you for the quick turnaround. I know that last week we kind of threw a lot at you and maybe it wasn't perfectly clear, but I think you did a great job. I, I like what we got out of this. And that's, those are the comments I wanted to make.
Farenbach? You know, just, oh, Sarah, do you want to go?
Oh, go ahead.
It just asked for clarification. I wasn't here when the conversation really kicked off. I was under the impression, my impression could very easily be wrong. I was under the impression we'd wait for the Brattle Group to, to give their final readout and then we do the energy policy.
So the order of operations here would be that Brattle Group is evaluating many different options. And you giving them some direction on what you will say yes to, what you won't say yes to, what is important to you, helps them put forward an integrated resource plan that reflects your priorities. The other way around would be we put tons of information out there, but a lot of it isn't applicable, not aligned with policy. And we presented a lot of options that, you know, you won't really even seriously consider or you're not really interested in. And so the order of operations is we set a policy, then we have an IRP that tries to align as closely as we can with that policy. Then you be, then we do the full IRP evaluation where you'll look at more data, look at more resources and really start diving into those, those pieces of information.
So we're providing guide rails with the policy.
Bingo. Correct.
Vocal singer?
I would like to see the language in updated version with the suggestions that Alderman Beck added. So thank you in advance for that. And I don't know if I should mention this now or under other, but I wanted to, looking at all of this and thinking about energy self-generation and everything, could we revisit the topic of net billing versus net metering for solar residents or residents that have adopted solar? I know we were going to bring that up again. We haven't talked about it in a while. We have a lot of new members. I think that the state of Illinois was going to sunset net metering in 2025, so time might be of the essence. Should I bring that up again under other or is this appropriate?
You know, we could definitely bring it up under other, but I believe that that is something that's going to be part of the rate study program because I think that that is applicable to rates.
Okay. Will there be a chance, waiting for a study that we miss out on, the program not being available?
You know what? There could be a break there because I don't think that the rate study is going to be completed until March of 2025. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, 20, sometime next spring, give or take.
Sometime next spring.
Piper?
I was just going to ask, I, I think I do agree with wanting to see that finalized language on those topics. Will the delay cause any problems?
It's a two-week delay. Most likely we go to the next cow and then probably, you know, the anticipation would be that you would pass at the next council meeting. It's a delay. Brattle Group was aiming to kind of, you know, finalize the initial IRP. They've been working off the draft policy. So we've already provided them a draft that they're working off of.
Okay.
And it hasn't changed substantially one way or another for the most part. So they've been working, so we've been updating them kind of as drafts are shared and, and as you give additional feedback. So my, my short answer is yes. Is it a major issue? No.
Okay. I was also going to say it might be worth tonight choosing between A and B, just so Max doesn't have to write both, change both.
Olivia?
I'm sure there's, Susan would like to, to speak on this. No, not tonight. Okay. But I, I would be, if, if this is helpful, we could vote on one of the drafts. And then before we vote at city council, we could see the amendments added in and then vote. Can we do that or do we?
Is the anticipation that anything would be removed?
Just?
Just added? Because if, if it's just added, you know, we can provide that to Brattle. They can kind of keep working off it. Once we make those amendments, then that just adds in. So that, that alleviates some of the delay issue because they can kind of work off of the assumption that this is a 95% baked cake, for lack of a better phrase.
And it sounds like some of this is just the way that words are put in whatever puzzle type of thing. So it's just how it's just presented.
I get the feeling sitting here that we have a number of the council that's not ready to really vote on this.
So.
I was ready to make motions.
Yeah, I guess the question would be, are we gonna, this is the question, are we going to move to sort of table it? Would that be the appropriate parliamentary procedure here? Vote, so I guess I'll make the motion. I motion, we table it until next cow for the amendments to be added and we then vote on what's presented next cow meeting. That's my motion.
Have to table it if you haven't taken it up yet? I'm looking at.
It just as a discussion, well, it says approval, but I don't know, would, would the policy have to come back in the form of a resolution?
I think what you, my understanding of your procedure right now is you would table it to the next cow meeting to have that discussion. You're not taking the action on other than the table and taking it back to cow.
Move for that. We have to vote on that. I mean, we can.
Decide not to take action on it tonight too.
And is there guidance on A or B or should both be brought back?
I'll be.
Right. I will go ahead and then amend B to reflect the feedback shared tonight and bring it back for the next committee of the whole meeting, assuming that is the action you are about to take.
We have a motion and.
Just words. I don't care.
It's always just words.
We have to get 14 of us to agree on it or all eight of us to agree on it.
Throw it in the air and go, throw me a C.
Call your.
I guess I call my question, right? We'll vote on it.
Well, but nobody seconded it.
We had a motion that never got seconded.
Yeah, it was seconded. It was seconded by.
It was just very quiet.
I'm alone for a motion and an Anderson for a second. Vocal singer for a second, I'm sorry. Do you like me to call the roll?
Or did you want to make some comment?
She's getting ready to.
She's prepping to be there.
Call the roll. Malone?
Yes.
Wolf?
Yes.
Sulfah?
No.
Baron?
Just tabling to cow. Vote on it at the next council meeting.
Aye.
Lehman? Lowman?
Aye.
Peeper?
Aye.
Farenbach?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
13 yes, no, no, one no, none absent.
Item is tabled. All right. We will go to item 12, city council updates, administrative report.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to, first, I saw the cocktails in the park event and it reminded me that I wanted to say thank you to Scott Haynes, who was able to get the head put out on that beautiful windmill that has been back there. The base needed to be rebuilt, the base needed to be painted and the head actually needed to be completely reassembled and painted. And Scott got all that done and it was installed the Friday before cocktails in the park and it really looked magnificent out there that night. So I'd like to thank him. The data center will be back on the agenda on August 26th. And that's for the agreement with them regarding water and sewer. And in communications, launched the new website and app today. So looking forward to people taking a look at a format that we think will be easier for folks to be able to locate the information that they need. In addition to the app, there is also, I'm sorry, in addition to the website, there's also an app that Max is showing up on the screen. And you can find that in whatever Android or Apple application store. Just look for the Batavia app, is that correct?
City of Batavia.
City of Batavia app. Community and economic development would like you to know that the plan commission is going to be meeting on Wednesday, August 20th. On the agenda is a plan development amendment for the properties at 873 to 875 North Randall Road to allow up to 30% of the building to be non-retail uses, rezoning from R0 to R1L and subdivision approval for a three-lot single-family development at 915 to 927 Main Street and a rezoning from light industrial to downtown mixed use for properties located on the east side of Water Street, north and south of Main Street. The South River Street Study Consultant will be doing a pop-up event at the farmer's market this Saturday, August 23rd. And the consultant and city, city staff will be present to answer any questions and provide information about the study. And we will also be having a second event in September. In Public Works, we are happy to announce that Tim Grimm has been named the new city engineer and Steve Allen has been named the new assistant director of Public Works and will retain, also retains the title electric superintendent. The street program resurfacing started beginning last week. And also a majority of the Ashton Ridge capital improvements along McKee Street and Van Norwick have been completed and both roadways opened just before school started. In the fire department, shifts completed in-service training on a new piece of equipment that is used for water rescue. It's called the rapid deployment craft. And it's also known as the banana boat, of all things, bright yellow boat. But we trained on that after the quarry closed and we are ready to put that into use, although we hope that we never have to. On Tuesday, August 12th, the police department would like to thank the members of the community who came out to support the Special Olympics tip a cop event at Riverside Pizza. It was tremendously successful and the department members raised funds and awareness for Special Olympics and at the events. And the police department wants to thank Riverside Pizza for their ongoing support in the, this important endeavor. Really proud of the work that the city of Batavia Police Department does to support Special Olympics in numerous events throughout the year, as well as attending the events themselves, coaching the youth and participating in cheering them on and giving them their medals. It really is a wonderful thing that they do. Also, the police department was on hand for the first day of school for BPS 101 students, both Thursday, August 14th and also on Friday, the 15th. Department members were present at the drop-off and pickup times at most schools throughout the district to provide a police presence and welcome all the new and returning students to school. Deputy Chief Johnson and Chief LaBarbara attended the annual Midwest Public Safety Conference in Tinley Park on Thursday and Friday. The conference provided a wide array of training options as well as the opportunity to meet with a bunch of different vendors who, and, and see the latest things in technologies available to police departments. And then lastly, I would like to end my comments tonight by thanking the members of the police and fire department who responded to the events of last Saturday. They showed exceptional bravery and professionalism and their commitment to their sworn duty of protecting the members of our community during a very violent and tragic incident. You know, it overshadowed the severe weather event that followed. And during that event, we received lightning strikes at both our main substation for our electric utility and also a severe lightning strike to our water treatment plant. And both were hit and sustained damage. And the employees, both of, both of those utilities and our Public Works Department, both responded brilliantly to the situations. Very few people lost power and those that did were restored very quickly. And it's events like these this past weekend that just demonstrate the exceptional staff that the city has. And I just want to thank them for that. And also to Lori and Max, who have been so supportive in communications surrounding these types of events. So with that, that's the close of my remarks unless anybody has any questions for me.
Questions, Alora?
Yes, Alderman Baron.
I just have a comment from a resident regarding the mosquito spraying. I didn't see anything on our public, like letting people know ahead of time. It was more like 24 hours, this is going to happen, but the vendor has like a three-day cutoff to get on the list. And so I don't know if maybe moving forward, there could be a little bit more of a notice given to residents, whether it be on Facebook or on our, on our weekly newsletter of the dates that they're going out. So some people can prepare for that. And then also if there's some concerns that they could get on the list for, you know, not to have the spray by their house, as opposed to calling Scott the day before going, please, 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 please. And then he have to go, he has to go to the vendor and request that that address not have the spray. And then I would also be interested in next year of knowing exactly how many houses have put in that request so we could kind of compare of, do we have 50% of the houses that are saying, please don't spray? I think that would just be helpful during the conversation. That was just some feedback that was given to me from a resident.
Perfect.
So I think maybe if we just, you know, the communication goes out.
Yes.
A little bit more timely. And I know that we do it for the flushing. Maybe they could do signs along the road to remind people that mosquito spraying is going in, so.
So one of the things is mosquito spraying is done due to results that we have found in our traps. So it isn't something that we do on a regular periodic basis. So we wouldn't be able to say at the beginning of the summer, these are the dates that we're going to spray for mosquitoes. And then it isn't that residents have the ability to opt out of spraying. They sign up to be notified so that they can close off their environment, not have their windows open when the spraying is being done. And we certainly can contact, Clark is our vendor for this. And we can ask them how many residents have opted in for that 24-hour notification that it's being sprayed in. And oftentimes, is that close in time that we will get a result of, let's say, a West Nile in one of the traps? And within 72 hours, we are going to be out there spraying as a result of that.
And I think there's some misperception because I think there are residents thinking that they're signing up to not have the spray going by their house. That, that's what I've been seeing in the conversations and the thought process. But I still think that, I know that we want to get out there when the trap, you know, comes with something back positive, but I think that we need to proactively be able to give people a notice, a little bit more notice to prepare. And also, and I, and I don't know how to do this, maybe it, I don't know if this is, staff can talk about it, some challenges. Not everybody's on Facebook and is on there. So I think that we need to somehow be able to reach out to more residents. And that's where the residents suggested, maybe we put up the signs like we do with the flushing.
When you say the signs for flushing, can you let me know?
Flushing, when the hydrants are put up saying, hey, we're going to have hydrant flushing in this area this week, you know, maybe something similar.
I haven't ever seen those, the hydrant flushing signs.
Yeah.
Usually just to A-frame signs, metal that go up.
Yeah, that they put out. I'm just pulling up my emails to see, and July, we had an email from Scott on Friday, the 11th. I think the spraying was on Monday, so it was a quick turnaround again, just like Laura said. And this last time in August was the 5th, which the treatment was Wednesday, the 6th, they look at weather conditions. And then I know St. Charles, I believe, uses them as well, so they're trying to coordinate efforts with the different communities that use them, so it is a quick turnaround as soon as we get those results.
So is the request that we take wait to spray when we get the results, so that people have more advanced notice?
Just giving people a little bit more advanced notice.
Okay.
And more than just social media.
Sure.
Because again, not everybody is on that, and that's where the suggestion came of, maybe on the main streets, as you're coming down, just kind of letting people know.
We can use our fire station electronic boards to let people know.
I was going to know, on the same topic, I had assist and reach out with the suggestion. I was going to bring this up to the Environment and Millet Commission first, of maybe even exploring more preventative mosquito measures beyond simply like spraying those that are already here. With, they suggested a program of what are called mosquito dunks, which are these small dissolvable tablets. You can actually buy them at Vernards and other similar stores here in town, that you basically prepare a bucket of water and put, you know, some leaves and other organic material in there as a kind of place for mosquitoes that would preferentially want to lay eggs. And you put this dunk in there that kills mosquitoes in the larval form, so it helps to reduce mosquito populations at the start by having them lay eggs in a, you know, body of water that will then kill off the mosquitoes early. Given that our mosquito, you know, spraying program is based on trapped, you know, on the mosquito traps only when necessary, such a program as that could work very well nicely with that by reducing the need for spraying potentially, if it were to be taken up by enough people. So I'm probably still bringing it up in front of the Environment and Millet Commission first as an idea to get their feedback, but maybe a program like that could help alleviate some concerns by reducing the need for spraying if there's uptake from it, while still having the spraying for cases, again, especially of West Nile that we don't want to have spread. So.
Okay.
Throwing that out there.
Thank you.
You know, last item, in my intention is to keep it short and sweet. I got a phone call from a resident. They showed, they were expressing concern regarding the involvement, what the Batavia Police Department's relationship is in relation to ICE, due to a, it sounds like somebody may have gotten picked up in the Kane County Courthouse. I did see your email that went out today regarding a similar situation on Kirk Road. Just for the record, can you just kind of walk us through it really quick?
Sure. So the Batavia Police Department would have very little involvement in somebody picked up at the Kane County Courthouse, given that it's up in St. Charles. However, we did have someone today who was apparently apprehended by ICE on Kirk Road. And our officer noticed the car pulled over by ICE and that the ICE car was haphazardly pulled over to the side of the road and decided to put lights on far behind that car in order to prevent a traffic situation from happening, but they didn't in any way participate in the situation, the communication that was happening between ICE and the individual involved. And the police department follows the guidelines of the Illinois Trust Act, and if you'd like to hear more about that, Chief Lowers can provide people with a little bit more insight on what the Trust Act is and how that affects our policies. Chief?
Yeah, absolutely. So as Laura said, Illinois law generally prohibits local law enforcement from participating in enforcement of immigration laws. We also have a policy on immigration violations, which scrupulously follows Illinois law, and we follow the guidance provided to law enforcement by the Illinois Attorney General's Office. I'll start by saying, building trust with all members of our community, regardless of immigration status, is vital to what we do as local law enforcement. The last thing that we want is for individuals to be fearful when they may be victims or witnesses to crimes, so building this trust is crucial to ensuring cooperation with our department and ensuring those in need of law enforcement services get the assistance that they need. In summary, just to kind of like quickly explain what the Illinois law prohibits, it prohibits participation in civil immigration enforcement by local law enforcement, including giving immigration officials access to individuals in custody, detaining persons pursuant to a federal administrative warrant, or detaining individuals pursuant to an immigration detainer, or otherwise participating in any civil immigration enforcement. We do not share information with federal immigration enforcement, nor do we stop or detain individuals based solely on citizenship or immigration status. We do not inquire about immigration status when interacting with the public, and we provide all citizens equal treatment regardless of their citizenship. I will also say, the situation today on Kirk Road, the officer encountered a very poorly-lit, unmarked vehicles on South Kirk Road, which was blocking a curbed lane of traffic. The stoppage was creating a traffic safety issue and backup on a high-speed roadway, so the officer did have concerns about the potential for a traffic crash. Was unaware of the affiliated law enforcement agency or the purpose of the stop, so he did activate his overhead lights for public safety purposes. He briefly contacted the agents on the stop, did not engage in any immigration enforcement actions or assistance, and soon after cleared the call.
Hold on a moment.
I wanted to let council and city staff know that I attended a Know Your Rights training that was held by the Aurora Rapid Response Team recently. ICER also offers these trainings, the Illinois Coalition for Immigration for Refugee Rights. And so I wanted to put it out there to see if perhaps the mayor and city staff and council would be interested in something like this, Know Your Rights training for our community. Aurora recently did a Know Your Rights training for all of their alder people and the mayor. And now, since that training, the alders have worked with small businesses and are doing a Know Your Rights training for them to inform the community. The purpose of it is to have a more informed base of, you know, residents to understand your rights. There are, you know, things that are occurring in the community that are troubling, and there's fear in the community. I hear it. I know I've spoken to several of alder people here who also hear these concerns more often. And I, for one, think it's important, so I just wanted to find out if that's something that we'd be interested in supporting.
Are there two others who would like to see that become part of an agenda? Yes. Okay. Were you just?
I was going to ask, could that be part of the city council retreat, actually, if we were to conduct such a training? That's optional.
It certainly could be part of that, or if you wanted to make it part of a public meeting, then it would both inform you and, you know, being recorded by BATV would be available to members of the community in the future.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the council? I have a very brief report I'd just like to give. As we've already discussed here tonight, there's a lot of questions floating around town on different subjects that I hadn't heard of before, but we suddenly now have some new things that are kind of focusing on. One of them is, the people are asking, how is, how are we allowing so many signs to now be put out in yards and side yards and on the front? And it was pointed out to me, and I went out myself and countered it just to make sure, on Randall Road this past weekend, from Fabian Parkway down to Main Street, on the southbound lanes, there were 17 signs attached to city signs advertising a fruit juice or a farmer's market that was out on Main Street by a mall mound. And they wanted to know why, how the City of Batavia allowed all these signs be attached to public signs. So that got some interest going. And the other one that's gotten a lot of questions recently is about, are we going to pass some kind of control or ordinance over bicycle riding? Because we suddenly now have all kinds of people riding electric bikes and are going across intersections with no stopping and everything else. I don't know where all that's going, but that is a common question that is now being asked in town about what's going to happen here? Are we going to adopt some ordinances about this? Or I just share it with you, is something that I think some of you may have gotten questions about, this kind of stuff that is going to be out there in our face here real quick. And the other one that's out there in the region at the moment is, as you know, there is quite a bit of conversation going on in the state legislature about basically reformulating the Regional Transportation Authority, or the RTA, and create a new agency. And one of the reasons that that's being done is, is that right now, the CTA in Chicago, their pension fund is $105 million in deficit. And then there's a whole bunch of other issues going on with the Metro train service versus the CTA's train service. And so there's an idea, the first proposal was, is that we should just throw the whole thing out and create a new agency, which would have 14 members, seven from the city of Chicago and seven from suburban Cook County, and then each one of the five surrounding counties in the region, Lake, McHenry, DuPage, Kane, and Will, would each have one representative. So the vote would be, there'd be 19 people on the board, but the five suburban counties would have one vote each. So Chicago then basically would be in command of this thing all the time. Now, that one didn't get out of the state legislature very far. So the latest one was, they're trying to come up with some new ways of paying for things. And so one of the things that they came up with, and I'm told this one may be dying in the vine too, is they wanted to invoke a tax on building sales in the suburban area. And for every $100,000 that you got for a property, 1,000 of it would go to Cook County and the city of Chicago to help reformulate their transportation system. And then another one was that every package that's delivered to any one of our doors outside of the U.S. Post Office, be it Amazon or all the various ones that are out there, there would be a $1.50 charge on each package. And anybody that got one in the suburbs would pay another big fee for this $1.50 to go to help fund all these things that we're trying to do in the CTA. That one, I was called today by two of our representatives, and they're wanting to come in and have a meeting with me, and I was going to suggest to them that maybe they need to come down here and talk to you folks and tell them, you guys, what's really going on in Springfield, because I think quite honestly, our state representatives are scared to death of this thing from a political perspective, because it's all about trying to bail out Chicago and taking away our power to select, you know, a train service or anything else. They'll control the whole situation in there. And I've been dragged into this conversation. I have probably two meetings a week, mostly on Zoom about it, with, there's a whole group, and the mayor in Hanover Park is kind of leading the charge on this, and the mayor's caucus is developing a special statement in which we're saying that, this is crazy, why would we want to do all this kind of stuff? We're using everything to bail out the city of Chicago. So I don't know where that's all going, but I just want to let you know, those are the conversations out there on the street, and we'll probably have some further conversations as this stuff marches on. Talking to others in the state legislature that I know, most of them think none of this is going no place, that it won't be able to get approved, but you'll continue to have... And if you read the Sun Times or the Daily News or any of the Chicago papers, they're in there every day with stories about all this and all these new schemes and everything that's going on, but I don't know where it's all going, but I just want to let you know that I've got my toe in the water on it, so if anybody asks you any question, you can ask me, and I can probably give you some report as to where it may or may not be going. It doesn't sound like it's going anyplace too quick.
Mr. Buck has a question, I think, for you.
What?
He's got a comment.
You know what, really more of a comment, I apologize. You know, I do follow local government pretty closely, to the extent that I'll actually, like, you know, publish social media, what's going on. I'll actually, you know, pull down the transcripts, run AI, generate notes, do all this stuff, been doing it for like six years, do a school board, do a city. I swear to God, this takes, like, this is whole. They're so opaque compared to local government, compared to us, through the school board, it's unbelievable. I have tried to track it in the past, as far as to provide the same level of insight that I can provide for the city as well as the school board. Any opportunity to, you know, bring them in at chambers, you know, even if only once a year, just to get to know who they are, like, kind of what they're thinking, what's going on, that'd be great. Stuff is published online, I don't get the impression that it's not, but simple things like, like, we're going to publish this meeting to YouTube.
We've done that in previous city councils. We have brought the school board in and had a meeting with them and talked about what we're doing and what they're doing, and what we're, may have some conflicts. I personally think it's a great idea, because there's some stuff out there now. One of the, one of the things I've had several people comment to me about is, why can't Batavia High School cut the grass in their parking lot?
I'm sorry, I'm not referring to the school board, I'm referring to our state reps in particular.
Well, I'm just saying that that's one of the conversations I'm getting, is why doesn't the city out there serving them with this order to cut the weeds in their parking lot? You know, I...
Designed that way.
Why?
And if they want to complain about it, it's two blocks west.
Right, well, they have, but I guess they don't feel it's going anyplace, so we're the next stop on the road. So I don't know if that one's coming to you or not, but it's out there floating around. All right, I'm done. We want to go to executive session. We talk about...
I'm moved. Oh, hold on a second.
All right, comment.
Alderman?
I meant to ask during other business, you kind of went a little fast. I wanted to ask the chief another question in regards to the tragedy that happened on Saturday. My heart goes out to the family and friends and all of those in the community grieving during this time. But I wanted to respectfully ask the police department at tonight's meeting about how the city provides support during a crisis like this, specifically hoping to learn what services are offered and to whom. Is it only the immediate family, or is it help extended to the entire building or the wider community? I just wanted to openly discuss this, especially since we had a huge discussion at the last meeting about this topic, and ways that our community helps in possibly improving those ways in our partnerships with the community.
Yeah, I also wanted to acknowledge, you know, that it is the events that occurred this weekend and the fact that it is a difficult time for our department and the community, and of course, the friends and family of the deceased. I do ask for your thoughts and prayers for everyone involved in this terrible situation, both for the brave men and women of our police department and all of the agencies that assisted us, but also, of course, for the, you know, the family and friends of deceased who I offer my sincere condolences to. What I can tell you with regards to your question about support is, we certainly want to do everything that we can to make sure that both our city staff, our officers are supported in terms of providing a myriad of different resources that the department has available through our EAP programs, through our peer support networks, and then seeking out subject matter experts and counseling and services that are available for people within our department as well. We are certainly doing everything we can to ensure that our staff is supported. With regards to the community, we did discuss talking, I can tell you that people intimately involved in this incident are offered services. A lot of those services are offered by the Kane County Major Crimes Task Force, because they're the ones interacting with those individuals and dealing with the situation that occurred. So in terms of those services, I can't definitively tell you what those services are, but I have confirmed and made... confirmed and made sure that appropriate resources and services have been offered to those in need and those deeply affected by this tragedy. In terms of the Batavia apartment complex or the facility, we did talk specifically about that and whether or not the apartment complex had the facilities. I know that we've started to engage with the apartment complex on what services they're able to provide and then determining what supplements the city needs to provide. I don't know where we are at in those conversations exactly.
I actually reached out to her earlier today. What was her response? They said they will have a crisis team on site this week to help residents, but I don't have any further details.
Okay.
I'm hearing that support is being offered to the community at large in that area there in the. Thank you.
I think I'll just follow that up with one, one brief comment I might say to anybody listening at home or anybody sitting around here. I have the unfortunate distinction of being involved in two mass shootings in my life. Very awful situation. And I used the first one that I was present for in a certain capacity. I'll tell you that simply asking your friends and neighbors how you're doing, even if they're two, three steps removed, really helps. It helps a lot. Even if maybe you're one step closer than the person you know, asking them as well might, might help as well. Just being proactive in asking the people out there, you know, how are you doing? Are you thinking about it? Too often, these tragedies happen and we just, well, you know about it, I know about it, what is there to say? Well, how you're doing is one thing. Second thing I can say is when I fell in love with dogs was when they brought the therapy dogs to NIU and, you know, I cried, right? The dog ran up to me, looked at me, I rubbed it, and I cried, right? So the more that we can engage with our friends and family, the more that we can engage, you know, maybe it's way over on the east side and I'm way over on the west side, but it was in our town, it was in our place. My friends and family were texting me. So just ask, right? I think that's a really important thing. So thank you, Alice, for bringing that up. Thank you, Chief Lowers, for handling it so well. And I just wanted to share my personal story of the importance of us not being silent and saying something.
And I would offer, I think we're trying as best we can to get information out on this, but there's a lot of factors in this story that can't be talked about yet. There's investigations that are going on and whatever have you. And, you know, I think as things work out, we'll be able to share more about what's going on, what went on and whatever. But I really am very proud of the Batavia Police Department and its handling of this thing because it was right up on front and right as best way they could do it with what they had to deal with. And, you know, we've got a bunch of other agencies that are now in with us on this whole conversation. So it's, it's not an easy one to stand, sit here and talk about, but I just want to assure the council that I think Laura and I are both of the opinion that our staff has done a wondrous way of trying to deal with this, both with the people and in the investigation end of this thing. Because there was some, some things in that investigation that really were kind of different. And so we had to figure out who, who was doing what where and the whole bit. So it was very, very complicated and it still is and is still ongoing. So we got to be careful what we sit here and say. All right. I guess we want to go into the executive session. Is that what we want to do?
I make the motion that we go into executive session for purchase of real estate.
Second.
Second, take a voice vote, I think, and I want, can you do that?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Both.
Aye.